Good evening, everybody. Welcome back. And glad everybody came back after we read 58 verses from 1 Corinthians 15. Good on you guys. Boy, you missed it. Got into all kinds of stuff. Yeah, so tonight, I'm gonna do something just a little bit different. I want to offer a little bit of review. So we'll take a step back. Then we're gonna branch off and go in a different direction. Then we're gonna come back to where we branched off and then move forward, which is also gonna contribute to where we branched off. So, there we go. And if you're already confused, good. It's not gonna get any clearer the rest of the night. No, really, what I want to get into, because we've already talked a little bit about it, got diverted with the resurrection, and what we're gonna talk about is the millennial reign and perspectives on that. So, kind of breaking one of my own rules, we're actually gonna get into the theological aspect of it, the eschatology. Okay? So, because we're at a point in Revelation, if we haven't been already, where people have multitude of opinions. And they're throwing things out of like, you know, oh, I'm a millennial, or a millennial, pre-millennial, post-millennial, and all these different things. And so it's just good to know what is it they're talking about? What do they mean when they say that? And just to muddy the water a little bit more, Mount is going to present a completely different perspective. So you can just keep that one in your back pocket until we get there. So, alright, let's start with a word of prayer, because we're gonna need it. Alright. Father, I thank you for this time for us to come together, to study your Word, to study this revelation, this apocalypse that you have revealed to your servant John, that that his disciples at that time could be so encouraged by this word, for what they were suffering, for what they were experiencing, for what they were about to experience, that they could be so inspired to continue on with life even under brutal circumstances, or to be challenged and corrected, and to be brought to repentance in such circumstances. Father, I pray that as we walk through this, even as we are approaching the end of this vision, that Father, you would continue to work in our hearts and minds, transform us, help us to understand really the context in which it was being given, but also how it translates to us today. And even as we talk about some of the theological perspectives that have evolved over the years, that you would help us to discern and give us grace and understanding as we approach these, and knowing that regardless of what we believe, you are still gonna do what it is you want to do. Whatever your will is, you are gonna exact that upon the earth and upon everyone in it. And so I pray that we would approach these things with humility and grace, but ultimately, just seeking your leading, your revelation in this. Father, I pray that we would have that same hope that believers did 2,000 years ago, and that it's hope that we live by, day in and day out. Father, I thank you for this time. Thank you for the blessing that you have put upon the reading of this word. And we seek that blessing tonight. We pray all of these things, in Jesus's name. Amen. Alright, so just by way of a quick review. I just gotta pause, like, I love that it's the four guys in the very back. You're just kinda sitting like judges. Like, I'm kind of expecting like cards to come up, like 10, or like 5, or even just a 1.3. Oh, boy. We're having fun in here. So, alright. So just by way of review, we were, we are in chapter 20, and we have been reading through, we've made it through verses 3 and 4, mostly through 4. We've actually still been discussing 4 and getting ready to move into 5 and 6. But, wouldn't you know it, the resurrection got brought up, and so we diverted from there. And that just really sums up last week. So, because we never got back on track from that. Now, let me go ahead and read through, because it's important for us to know these verses as we discuss the paper that we've handed out. And actually, if you've just come in, there is a handout over here on this chair. And we'll do our best to get this online at some point. So, maybe on the Facebook group, or somewhere. So, everybody got a copy? Talking about this one here? Everybody good? Okay, good, good. Okay, so I want to read these six verses, all six, and then gonna jump back. So, Revelation, chapter 20. "Then I saw an angel coming down from heaven, holding the key of the abyss and a great chain in his hand. And he laid hold of the dragon, serpent of old, who is the devil and Satan, and bound him for a thousand years. And he threw him into the abyss and shut it and sealed it over him, so that he would not deceive the nations any longer, until the thousand years were completed. After these things, he must be released for a short time. Then I saw thrones, and they sat on them, and judgment was given to them. And I saw the souls of those who had been beheaded because of their testimony of Jesus and because of the word of God, and those who had not worshiped the beast or his image, and had not received the mark on their forehead and on their hand. And they came to life and reigned with Christ for a thousand years. The rest of the dead did not come to life until the thousand years were completed." This is the first resurrection. "Blessed and holy is the one who has a part in the first resurrection; over these the second death has no power. But they will be priests of God and of Christ, and will reign with him for a thousand years." Alright, so this thousand years is what gives way to the term of the millennial reign. Right? So so mila in Latin. And then, if you ever hear the term, like, it's spelled chiliest, or chiliest, that's actually from the Greek. C-H-I-L-I? Well, I can't remember if there's an A-S-T, but I think it might just be I-S-T-S. So, chiliest. So alright, now, as we've been discussing, we were talking about the abyss, Satan, so the dragon being thrown into the abyss for a thousand years, bound, so he's not there to deceive the nations. Then, at the end of that, he is released to stir them up. So then we get into thrones and all of these other things. So, now, the question is, like, what we're talking about here is the millennial reign, okay? That is commonly what is associated with it. Now, I want to point you to this paper here. And we're gonna go through the different perspectives. Did all of these perspectives actually come up in the time of Jesus? Or were they already around during Jesus's lifetime? It's a little bit complicated. Like everything, right? No, no way! So, they were actually, so much like we had a diverging opinion even on the resurrection. The Sadducees did not believe in the resurrection, and that's why they were sad, you see? Right? Ah, it never gets old, it's so funny! And so, but then you have the Pharisees, who did believe in the resurrection. And so those were the two big camps within Judaism of that time. So even on something as big as the resurrection, like, I mean, they literally just thought God was gonna sort this out, and like, this is it. So we're just here to serve and obey, and that's like, what happens after we die? Might be nothing, might be something. We'll see.
But that takes a lot of faith.
Absolutely! No, it really does. It really does. Absolute melody, you just nailed that. Yes, absolutely. It can't be discounted, because all of a sudden, there's not a carrot being dangled. It's just a matter of like, this is truth, this is God, this is the revelation that God has given me as His people, and I'm just gonna walk this out. Oh, no, I mean, it's supreme faith, it really is. And, and I think you guys have all heard my opinion on many of the things of the law that like, just didn't make sense, that were contrary to many of the cultures around the Israelites. They were doing all those things by faith. Because the top of a mountain caught fire, and because, you know, like, hundreds of years earlier, they heard these stories of what happened, and, you know, there are people coming out of Egypt, and and here they would live by that. And, most often, in a period of time where nobody else is. Hopefully, even already, from our study of the Old Testament, we have seen how much Israel actually obeyed God as a people. They definitely didn't get it right in the wilderness, most of the time. And when they got into the land, like, we're looking at like 40-year increments. Like, oh, there's some good guy that's in charge. Oh, all of a sudden, everybody's obeying God. And then all of a sudden, he dies, and everybody's like, oh! Who's God? Who's Joshua? Who's Moses? I don't know. And they just go and do their own thing for however long, and then suffer, and then all of a sudden, God raises up a hero. Because when they turn back to God, the Right One, the One and Only, right? Yahweh. And so, I just summed up the Old Testament, you're welcome. And so but all that to say, is in the midst of all of this, you have these two branches, of some believing that there was life after death, and then all these others that were just like, nah. I don't know, we'll see. So ooh, but this is the fun part. Is that, remember when Jesus is responding, right? Right? You know where I'm going with this, right? I'm the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. Not just in the Torah, a lot of what the Pharisees are pulling from are from the prophetic, from the prophets. Yep, and that's the difference, is the Sadducees did not get into the prophets or other books. They primarily stayed with the Torah, as inspired. Now, that being said, as we get into the millennial reign, this also ties in as well, because the Sadducees also did not have a developed eschatology, but the Pharisees did. And so, now, a lot of this also comes from Daniel's writings, and then what we see in the Maccabean period, and some of that fulfillment. And most of people thought at that time, that was it. This is the fulfillment of prophecy, Judah is Messiah, like, some of this stuff, right? But then, after, you know, he dies, and then all of a sudden, you know, a generation later, and we realize, oh yeah, people are really just people, and they're gonna sin. Nobody's perfect, right? And so then they're all like, oh wait, maybe there's another to come. And then, you know, about that time, Rome comes in and takes them over, and subjugates them, and so then they're like, oh yeah, we definitely need a Messiah. So this leads up to a really big ramping up of messianic hopes just in time for Jesus to be born. What a coincidence, right? So then, it just kind of moves from there. But, all that to say, in the prophets, major prophets, minor prophets, and we're actually gonna read some of those today, from Joel, from Zechariah, from Zephaniah, Malachi, like, it actually speaks of that period. So they do have a little bit of a developed eschatology, but is it a 1,000-year reign? Or is this gonna dovetail a little bit better with what we're actually reading in the next chapter? That's my cliffhanger. So, is everybody tracking on this so far? So basically, like, within Judaism, you have this big split between the Sadducees, who were the priests, and remember, they were all concerned about the temple. So after 70 AD, and especially after 135 AD, these guys are just lost. They're just like, ah. And then that's really when Talmudic Judaism, or rabbinic Judaism took over, because they had to rewrite the whole script. Because there was no temple, which was literally at the center of their whole religious life. So, okay, so a millennial, post-millennial, and you got pre-millennial. And then this actually branches off into classic and dispensational. Believe it or not, this is. Alright. So here's the mess that we're walking into. Now beginning with a millennial. So this roughly begins with Augustine, around 400 AD. And it's because of Augustine, his connection to Luther, that this really makes a strong presence within Protestantism. Because Luther, Martin Luther, was an Augustinian monk. So his theological training was primarily rooted in Augustine. So Calvin also accepts this as well. And so the belief here with a millennialism is the millennium is now in heaven, where Christ is ruling spiritually. So a, meaning really like, no millennium, this is all in kind of a figurative sense, that the millennium, or really being synonymous with the Kingdom of God, established with Christ at His ascension, right? And so, or at the cross, technically. And then moving forward, that there is no, it's not necessary to have a literal, physical, millennial reign for Jesus to rule here on the earth. He's already ruling at the right hand of the Father for the last 2,000 years, or 1,954 years. So the church on earth is always in the tribulation, and Christ rules in the heart of a believer. So, for all the bad things that we see around us, talk of beasts, and, you know, governments and kingdoms, and all this other stuff, well, that's just how the world is. Christ is still ruling in our hearts, and so when we share the gospel, when we minister to others, it is a furthering of the Kingdom of God. And His rule is expanding in that way. Now, this will all happen up until the final rebellion, at which the second coming happens, at which the resurrection happens of all the dead. And everybody will be brought to judgment at that point. So really, all the stuff that we're gonna read in the next few chapters is all gonna happen in a hurry. Like, at the same time. So, what many people think happens at the end of the millennial reign, when Satan is let loose and stirs up the nations, and they come against, you know, the king and his people, and then God just says, ah, no, we're done. We're just rolling this up, and then boom, second resurrection, which is all the, everyone who's dead, and everybody goes to the great white throne judgment. Is everybody tracking so far? So they believe that, like, basically, that happens at the very end. That just sums up everything. So we will just be living our lives, and things will just continue to get worse, and then God will just, boom, we're all going to the judgment.
And who was that "they"?
A millennialist. Yep. Any questions on a millennialism? John what? John 12:31. "So, beginning at 27, now my soul has been troubled, and what shall I say? Father, save me from this hour; but for this purpose I came to this hour. Father, glorify your name. Then a voice came out of heaven; I have both glorified it and will glorify it again. So the crowd of people who stood by and heard it were saying that it had thundered." Which, we've already encountered that in Revelation, haven't we? The thunders. "Others were saying an angel has spoken to him. Jesus answered and said, 'This voice has not come for my sake, but for your sakes.'" Now, judgment is upon this world. Now the ruler of this world will be cast out. "And I, if I am lifted up from the earth, will draw all men to myself." Being cast out, or thrown into the abyss. So that is the understanding for how that fits together. And the whole idea of judgment being upon the world. So what have we read for chapter upon chapter? Judgment. Okay. So the next one, so in combination with just knowing that he was ascended to the right hand of the Father, as Paul points out, as Peter points out, as even in Acts, as Luke records, that like, that's where he was going. And 12:31 just shows that as Satan was cast out, like, he was cast out of the earth, or like, out of the playing field. And we know here, from chapter 20 in Revelation, that where else could he go but the abyss? Or the lake of fire, but and I think there might be diverging opinions on that within that camp, whether it's the abyss or the lake of fire. I think the lake of fire is reserved for the actual final judgment. Alright, post-millennial. As we can see here on the paper, if you have a magnifying glass. I'm sorry. My bad. You can actually use your phone as a magnifier, just throwing that out there. Put it on camera and zoom in. So this was generally accepted between 1100 and 1900 with a missionary movement. So the whole idea is that we are in the post-millennial age, okay? As the gospel is preached, Christianity will spread, the world will gradually be Christianized, which will reach in societies becoming, which will result in societies becoming better. "We ultimately achieve a long period of peace and prosperity on the earth under the rule of the church, through whom Christ rules the earth." So everything was going great, and then World War I happened, and they were like, oh, this can't be right. And then the depression happened. And so scholars such as Edwards, Strong, Warfield, and Hodge really fall into this camp. And so there are still some post-millennialists around, but this comes more from the idea of, really, just the progression of society, primarily from a Western perspective. And as things were becoming more industrialized and advanced, and that there was peace, that, oh yeah. Yeah, basically, like, Jesus has already done His work. Things are getting better, He's left it to the church. So it's kind of the church age on steroids, right? Where we are the ones representing Christ and furthering His kingdom, which, it's almost like in italics there, it's like, our kingdom. And so, upon the earth, and making everything better. Because wherever Christianity goes, everything automatically gets better. That's not always the case. That was really tongue-in-cheek. I was just kind of letting that hang there. Because of course, it's only our brand of Christianity. When that spreads, everything gets better. I'm sorry, I'll quit with the sarcasm. And so ironically, happened about the same time as World War I. And so, you know, like, yeah, there was, there wasn't like, not just a double whammy, probably like a quadruple whammy there, that really just kind of shattered, like, you could just imagine the post-millennialists gathering, and just like, oh, next week, there's like, not as many people. And so, yeah, but I have, so in the different groups that, you know, part of, like, I've seen more post-millennialists popping up. Now, with everything happening in the world, we'll see if that also gets decimated. The post-millennialist group. Yeah, I mean, I, so I don't know, I'm not in this camp. So, yep. And really, so what is used to justify this is we have the 40 years of, basically, from the crucifixion to 70 AD. So, a lot of the post-millennialists kind of fall into a preterist camp, where a lot of this stuff was fulfilled already in 70 AD. And so like, that being the tribulation period. But then after 70 AD, things just kind of take off with the apostles moving out, with the gospel going forth, and all of a sudden, everything leaves Jerusalem and Israel proper, and moves out throughout the world. And everything, everybody is evangelized, and then it's also become synonymous with the millennium once everything reaches a point of peace. So, does that period start? Has it already started? Is it going to start when the world has reached peace? And then all of a sudden, that's when Jesus comes back, and, you know, everything, heaven and earth merge at that point. So there you go. So second coming, so once again, like the a millennial position, we have the second coming with, basically, the eternal state, lake of fire, general resurrection of the dead, and judgment, all happening really right at the basically the eternal state, lake of fire, general resurrection of the dead and judgment, all happening really right at the same time. Okay. Any questions on post mill? Do we have any, I'm not even going to ask, nevermind.
I assume at the end you'll tell us where you stand.
Eventually, eventually, we'll get there.
I assume the church doesn't have a position or does?
No, the church does not have a position. Cause it's the weeds, cause it's the miners. Now, we do anticipate Jesus's return. And the resurrection of the dead. So that is a part of our core beliefs here at CCC. I think that is something that is disputed within that camp. So like I said, it kind of got reset, like, so there were plenty of. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, so like with this American Civil War. You know, everybody's like, hey, everything's going great. For most people, right? And then all of a sudden, American Civil War breaks out and brothers fighting against brother and all this stuff. And all of a sudden, like, oh, nope. So their numbers diminished, but after the Civil War, everything's a lot better and just kind of on this upward progression. And so there's a lot more people joining that camp within, just, and just in the United States. And I think in, you know, Western Europe, and then all of a sudden, World War One breaks out. And you know what starts off, you know, is a small conflict and it blows up and everybody's choosing sides. Then the United States joins in. And all of a sudden, you know, I mean, that's, that really takes a toll. But then after that, you know, you have the League of Nations formed and everything else. And so everything's kind of looking on the up again. But then you got World War Two. So it, like, it was just one hit after another in, you know, the first 50 years. You know, because then you just go right into a cold war and imminent annihilation. So like, that's where a lot of the post mill idea has kind of stalled out. Yeah. And, and that's, yeah. And that's, that's why like, you know, just the whole approach to Revelation, like you were saying, like, you know, we have these regional pockets of, you know, kind of going through the four horsemen and these lower K, you know, lower, you know, A anti-Christ like popping up, causing persecution and you know, just the whole cycle of everything happening. But you know, there's going to be a point where these loops straighten out and there's going to be a culminating moment. Globally. Where, you know, what we're reading is that Messiah is going to come back and deal with that. Now, what we're saying is, does he come back and deal with that? And then he sticks around and rules and reigns? Or does he come and deal with that, like what we're reading in a snatch them up? We're going to judgment. Because that's what these previous two positions would hold, is that the second coming happens and then judgment. The great white throne judgment before God, and that's when everybody gets sorted.
But that doesn't really track with what Revelation says, does it?
Well, so the point is that that's not really what Revelation says. So this is the tricky part is that we're reading a apocalypse with symbolism. With ideas that are being conveyed. And that's actually one of the points on the top is the idealism or the spiritual, just completely spiritual. So we're just taking everything where history is just happening and then boom, second coming and judgment, right into eternity we go. So. And this basically is one of the older ones. It's through origin. And he basically reads Revelation as an allegory. So this is around 200 AD. And Augustine gravitates towards this. And a little bit of spoiler there. So the book of Revelation and other eschatological writings are symbolic of the continuing conflict of good and evil. They represent the fact that ultimately good is victorious in the end. So that is the message of Revelation. That is the message of, you know, so without torturing the text to come up with a game plan of how this is all going to happen. What this is conveying is the, you know, one of the oldest stories is that evil happens. And our hope is in the Lord to come back and to conquer evil and to make everything right. Period. That's it. And for us to persevere through that. There you go. So thank you for the setup. Moving on to premillennialism. Yeah. Okay. So, so yeah, I mean, so what were the grounds for this idea ever even coming around? I don't know. I'll tip my hat like I don't fall into this camp. So. Yeah. And so, so if you look at the, you know, the post mill and they got that, you know, little line and all of a sudden, oop, there's this ramping up here to the millennial reign or, you know, or to the millennium. Well, so that's, you know, kind of this blending tribulation period. The church has got its work cut out. And so as it's evangelizing, it's bringing peace to the world. And so then there's going to reach a point, if it hasn't already, that we are entering into the millennium. That's right. So, you know, it, but that's the thing. Okay. Like this is a great big book. And even just in Revelation, from what we've studied, we have talked about different perspectives on numerous parts of this book, right? And even kind of come up with our own model for like Elliot's thread, right? And so, so there's all kinds of things. So, I mean, literally, if we wanted to put our heads together and come up with a new theory on Revelation, we could, and we could just peddle it all we wanted. And we could write a book and we could create charts and do a video series and all kinds of stuff, like it really doesn't take that much. And really like, and really all you have to do is just find a few obscure words and hang it on there. And, you know, it, it's, that's just where we're at. That's really where you know, as 2,000 years of theological development, it has gone in absolutely every direction. And it's not been created in a vacuum. There are localized contexts. There are influences from the past that are still speaking into present ideas. I mean, you know, we're just looking at, you know, idealism or spiritualism. I mean, that's from origin around 200 AD. And Mount actually gravitates towards origin. And his perspective on this. Keener has a different idea. So I'm going to kind of read from both of these and even Osborne. And Schnabel has yet another perspective. And so, you know, it's really fascinating that as we approach this just to know that like, you know, as much as we care about this, when is Jesus coming back? Is he coming back? Like, well, one, praise the Lord, we all agree that he's coming back. It's just what happens between now and then. Right? But as you've heard me say countless times since this study has started, we have our standing orders to go and preach the gospel, to follow Jesus, to be his disciples and to make disciples and to do good in, in this world. That's the main thing we need to be concerned about. That's the thing that we want him to catch us doing when he comes back. Regardless of an anti-Christ being in office or whatever else is going on. We have our standing orders. Nothing changes. Nothing changes because of an election. Nothing changes because of earthquakes and wars and everything else. We've still got a mission to, to do. And so, you know, at some point, like we could be right next to a post mill or a millennialist and be like, hey, your standing orders are the same as mine. We've got a job to do. And so we can do that together. That's the beauty of it. So we don't have to divide over this. And that's really the whole point that I wanted to talk, you know, about this with you guys, just so you know, like war, you know, where this is coming from. Does that make sense? So. I know, I'm kind of circling back around here. Jack, now, that, that's where we're going next. Because to Jim's point, these other ones really don't have a lot of scripture like backing it up, and especially within Revelation. But what we're going to see in the premillennial position, it's almost like it exclusively pulls from Revelation. And just a few other places outside of that. And so, but to your point, like, well, we'll talk about Israel in a minute because that is fully within like, yeah. So my professor was Schnabel. Yep. And we actually use Grant Osborne's commentary as a part of that, as that was our textbook. So I will read from those here in a moment. So, and that's the beautiful part of like of academia, like it is more nuanced, right? It's not just like slap a label on it. Like what we're doing for everybody else. I can point that out. All right. So the premillennial position. And this is probably the most popular one that most of us have grown up with. This is captured within the Left Behind theology. So. All right. So classic premillennialist. So most believe that it began with the apostles. But they point to Irenaeus in 150 and Justin Martyr around 120. As like in their writings and their letters. Basically awaiting the millennial reign. Now, mind you, that is not a long time after Revelation was written. I mean, that's within 30 years, 60 years. So that's pretty recent.
Was it written around 90 then?
That's kind of the date that we were gravitating towards in this class. Thank you. So the idea is that we are currently in a church age. And one of the points within premillennialism is that the church has replaced Israel. So this is what is called replacement theology. And you're welcome to look these up on your own and but it basically is that the church has replaced Israel. The Jews, Jewish people. Israel, like basically just all of that. And for many people, the Old Testament with it. Yeah, all of that is just about irrelevant. So like whether it's Mount Zion, what, you know, some of those references and things are just irrelevant. So. So with this, what we have is the church age will happen up until the great tribulation. And at some point during the great tribulation. And this is where we get into pre-trib, mid-trib, or post-trib. The rapture happens. If you notice, the rapture is not a part of any of the other millennial positions. So. With the rapture, there is simultaneously the second coming. As long as it's post-trib. If it's pre-trib and mid-trib, him coming back, Jesus coming back doesn't really count because he's not set foot on the Mount of Olives. And so. No, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, this is serious. And so, but if he appears in the sky, it doesn't really come back as a second coming. It is just the rapture and him calling everyone up. But then there will be a point where he does return and kind of puts an end to all the shenanigans going on here with the beast and the false prophet. And takes care of business that way. Then that ushers in and all of this happens leading to basically some of the points that we've read. The beginning of the millennial reign of Jesus. So Jesus will physically like upon his second coming, be here to reign for a thousand years. And then within this camp, you actually have like, is it a literal thousand or is it figurative? You know, is it just for like a very long time? And so there's different thoughts on that. And at the end of which what happens is Satan is freed and doomed. So then we get into basically the rest of chapter 20. And at which time God will kind of wrap things up. And then there is the judgment. The great white throne judgment and either being with the Lord forever. Or the lake of fire. Remember when we talk about the resurrection, the second resurrection? We have everybody, not just believers, everybody is resurrected. Remember, God is God over everybody that has ever lived. So non-believers are resurrected. They are resurrected to judgment. I don't know why I feel like I need to say that, but I think a lot of times when we talk about the judgment, when we talk about, like, we're just thinking like it's for us. And then like, oh, great, we pass, like, praise the Lord, literally, and we get to be with him forever. But like, this is for everybody. Like there is going to be a point when absolutely everybody that has ever lived will stand before God to give an account of their lives. And he will decide where eternity, and yes, there's different interpretations of that, where eternity, what eternity will look like for them. So that is classic premillennialism. And I hope you understood, like, you know, the whole rapture is a piece there. And so within premillennialism, you have pre-trib, pre-tribulation, mid-tribulation, after the three and a half years, or post-tribulation rapture. Do that again? So. All right. So. So basically what happens is you have the church age. Then at some point, the tribulation starts, the great tribulation. Okay. And it's going to run for seven years. So, pulling from Daniel. So, Great Tribulation, this is the rise of the Antichrist, generally thought of, like, kind of a one-world government, like, all the stuff that we've been reading, just take Revelation absolutely, one hundred percent, literally, to the nth degree. Boom. Now, during this time, so, you got seven years. So, you got three and a half. So, right here at the beginning, some people think that a rapture is going to happen. And the rapture is the idea that Jesus comes back and takes all of the believers, whoop, we disappear. Okay? And whether that is everybody floating up into the sky and disappearing, or just, poof, vanishing. So, it either happens before all of this takes place, all this trouble, all the tribulation, all the horrible things, the judgments that we've read for the last year. It either happens before all of that, or it happens in the middle of it, before things get really bad. Before the bowls are poured out, right? The bowls of wrath. So, and that's the idea, is that, that the church is saved, the believers are saved from the wrath of God. So, they endure part of the judgment, being here to minister, giving everybody the final chance, and then, whoop, gone. And so, they don't have to suffer under the wrath of God. But then, some people actually think that it's post-trib, where the church has endured all of this, and been a shining light, and Jesus comes back and raptures them up. At least the ones that have not been killed already. So, and then, at this point, it's not so much a rapture, really, it's just Jesus returning and ending the reign of the Antichrist, the beast, the false prophet, basically what we just read in nineteen. The Doom of the Beast and False Prophet, verses twenty and twenty-one. So, all of that happens at this point with Jesus's return. At that point, and then this is the millennium from that point on. So, then, once again, kind of in the spirit of taking this very literally, this is a literal one thousand years. At which time, so, all the verses that we've read in chapter twenty, Satan is let loose, stirs up the nations, all of a sudden, there's going to be a big fight in Jerusalem. And that's when God says, whoop, we're done, time for judgment. And so, then, everybody is either resurrected from the dead, or translated, so, meaning, like, if we were still alive, and God said, whoop, time for judgment, like, we are immediately going to the throne. In whatever state that would be. So, so, in classic pre-millennialism, Israel is absolutely not a factor. Like, Israel is completely written off. That is classic pre-millennialism, it is concerned only for the church. Israel had its chance, poof, done. So, really, there is a complete disregard for Old Testament prophecy and things like that. Is dispensational pre-millennialism. And this one really came about in the eighteen thirties, and found a lot of popularity, from the eighteen thirties to the present, and primarily in England and the USA. And you could probably put a whole bunch of dots around the world where missionary efforts took place. Because, and that's the thing about missionaries, is where they go, they're taking their theology with them. So, whether it be, you know, of a charismatic nature, or Catholic, or everything in between. So, or if you're a charismatic Catholic. So, there are branches. So, yep. So, popularized by Darby, Schofield, Lindsay, MacArthur, and Lahey. You can't just start laughing when I say names like that. That's, alright, so, the idea is that we have Old Testament Israel up until the cross. So, you see that, this is the last one, the bottom one there. And so, Jesus ushers in the church age. And basically, well, you know, let me back up just a little bit. The whole idea with the dispensational tag there is that God had worked and revealed himself in different dispensations of his grace at different times throughout history. So, with Adam and Eve, with Moses, with Jesus. And then, what is going to happen in, so that we are currently in the church age, or an age of grace, right? Then, what is going to happen after that is the millennium, the millennial age, where Jesus is ruling and reigning. Now, what's going to happen here is instead of different points in the tribulation, and this dispensational idea is that the rapture happens right here at the beginning. So, this is what basically puts a cap on the church age and will ushers in the Great Tribulation. So, the rapture is happening right here.
For just the good guys.
For just the...
You said it.
Uh, for, for the believers.
So, for all the believers.
So, if you're left behind, you're not a believer.
That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right.
So, for all the believers.
Huh?
So, for all the believers.
For all the believers, all the ones that...
On God's side at Armageddon.
There you go. There you go. Alright. So, so, the rapture here, tribulation, and it's during this point, when things get really bad, that Israel repents and returns, returns to the land, the temple's rebuilt, and Israel becomes a key player. Okay? So, if you would imagine this, Israel kind of being on its own trajectory, right, where it is returning to the land, okay, like in the early nineteen hundreds, and all of a sudden, it's reclaiming all of the land, building a temple, really getting everything going in the way that they feel like God had revealed to them in what we read as our Old Testament. Okay? And at that point, they're also feeling that when they get all of this together, the Messiah is going to come back. What you have here is the greatest piece of historic irony that has yet to be fulfilled. And so, so, as they're moving towards this, the dispensational pre-millennialist is thinking that, oh, yeah, in the tribulation, that is going to happen, and guess what? Jesus is going to come back. So, they're all going to, like, intersect at that point, and Jesus will come back, Jesus will inhabit that temple, and it's from that place that he will rule and reign for a thousand years. Uh, they get left out. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. So, no, all the people that...
They get left behind, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you got to believe this right to be a part of the game, right, to get picked up. So... That's right. We just read a whole lot of stuff that sounded like Jumanji. Okay, so, anyways, so, what we have here also are different ideas of the rapture. But primarily, it is at the beginning that leaves, like, that ends the church age, okay? But then, there is also ideas that, you know, some might have here in the middle, basically, pre-wrath. That's kind of, that's really where it lands, is pre-wrath. It happens before those last three and a half years. But, at that point, after the tribulation, which ends with Jesus's return, and what we read in chapter nineteen, once again, taking this very literally, verse, chapter nineteen, verses twenty and twenty-one, with the beast and the false prophet seized. That begins the millennial reign of Jesus. And basically, just kind of following suit from there, he has an earthly kingdom. This is a merging of, like, basically, the church and Israel. Some would actually believe that the church is in heaven during that time. And if, oh, man, there's so many different hairs we could split here. So, either that, when Jesus came back at the end of the tribulation, he either brings the church back with them, and so, then, all of a sudden, you have Israel and the church under the kingship of Christ for a thousand years. Or, you have the church remaining in heaven with God, and Jesus is ruling over Israel in that dispensation for a thousand years, fulfilling all of the Old Testament prophecies.
How do they back up either one of those?
We'll get to the Old Testament verses here in a little bit. And it depends on, you know, is that a literal supper? Is that a, like, the church being with the Lord? Is that in heaven? Is that on the earth? Is that that wedding supper? Is that happening at his victory? So, when we read that, we read that on the cusp of his victory over the enemy. So, yeah, there's all kinds of different things that can kind of be inserted. Remember, as we approach Revelation, it's looping over itself. So, a lot of people have been reading this straight through. That everything that we've been reading is chronological order. But as we've seen, it's kind of looping over itself, and we're getting more details around it. So, I think that kind of changes the way that it's approached. So, yeah.
About the tribulation, what did that mean?
So, those are the rapture, question mark. If anybody thought it was the resurrection, it's not. Nobody really believes that anybody's getting resurrected during the tribulation. Some people believe that. I think there, as we've approached this, there are different perspectives that, one, there might not be a rapture. And we can get to all the verses about, you know, the rapture and everything here in just a second. And that people would go through this period of trial and awaiting Jesus's return. If they become martyred, so be it. If they die by, you know, and there's different verses that kind of point this out, but regardless, whether you're here when Jesus returns, you will be transformed. So, Melody?
But that's why we have millions of different denominations.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah, yeah. At every single point, every single option I've given you, just imagine it's a different denomination, or at least, at least a single church that, you know, believes a little bit differently. So, and I don't want to say, like, doesn't matter, but it's not something to divide over. These are minor points of theology that really, like, this is the whole basis of CCC that we are sticking to the majors, that Jesus is returning, that there is a resurrection, that there is a judgment. And that's what we have to, like, keep in view as we are, like, just dividing off here on all of these different, like, minor points of theology. Amen. One hundred percent.
Is the word rapture in the Bible, you know?
Have we talked about this before?
Yes.
I thought we had. I thought we have. David, do you know offhand what episode, like, episode, what, what video, what class that was? Video fifty-four, twenty-nine minutes in. David, that's amazing. Wow. Has Israel been replaced as God's chosen people?
In light of the church.
So...
And if they have, how does that apply? Because supposedly...
Okay. Alright, so, we were talking a little bit about this on the break, and let's see, is there anything else I want to say? Okay, let me wrap up dispensational pre-millennialism, okay? So, Jesus comes back, ushers in a thousand years of his earthly reign. Then, after that, basically, the events of what we're reading in chapter twenty. Satan is let loose. Verse seven through ten there. And then, the devil is recaptured, thrown into the lake of fire. Actually, let me just read seven through ten, as we've talked about, like, oh, what happens at the end of the millennial reign? Chapter twenty, verses seven through ten. "When the thousand years are completed, Satan will be released from his prison, and will come out to deceive the nations which are in the four corners of the earth, Gog and Megog, to gather them together for the war. The number of them is like the sand of the seashore. And they came up on the broad plain of the earth and surrounded the camp of the saints and the beloved city, which many believed to be Jerusalem. And fire came down from heaven and devoured them. And the devil who deceived them was thrown into the lake of fire and brimstone, where the beast and the false prophet are also." Just a reminder, that's after a thousand years. "And they will be torn into day and night forever and ever." Forever. Okay, so, now, then, we get to the Great White Throne Judgment. So, let me go ahead and read verses eleven through fifteen. We will go back and cover this more in depth, but just so you know what we're talking about when we talk about the Great White Throne Judgment. "Then I saw a great white throne." So, in case you were wondering where the name came from, there you go. Alright. "Then I saw a great white throne, and him who sat upon it, from whose presence earth and heaven fled away, and no place was found for them. And I saw the dead, the great, and the small, standing before the throne, and books were opened, and another book was opened, which is the book of life. And the dead were judged from the things which were written in the books, according to their deeds. And the sea gave up the dead which were in it, and death and Hades gave up the dead which were in them, and they were judged, every one of them, according to their deeds. Then death and Hades were thrown into the lake of fire." This is the second death. This is the second death, the lake of fire. And if anyone's name was not found written in the book of life, he was thrown into the lake of fire. So that is the great white throne. And so as you look there on the right side of that, this paper, you can see the eternal state. So intentionally vague, because what does that look like from then on? Well, we'll get into chapter 21. And that'll kind of spell some of that out. And then also the other option is the lake of fire, what we just read. So, all right, now. That is dispensational premillennialism. Before I start talking about Israel. The question of Israel, which could be a class all in of itself. Does anybody have any questions on dispensational premillennialism? Say that five times fast. Uh, primarily, except Israel. So classic premillennialism immediately wrote off Israel and the church has replaced them officially. So that is the biggest difference, because even within classic premillennialism, uh, there's. Well, earlier on, there was not an idea of a rapture. It was just looking forward to the second coming. So the rapture is a much more recent idea as what we've seen in dispensational premillennialism. The question is, is there anything from, in the New Testament that would lead us to believe the apostles believed that Israel was written off? So. All right. Here's some thoughts. Okay, all right, all right, all right. Focus here. I don't know. I don't know. You know what? I, I, I know. Those are linked. Those are linked. Those are linked. So, uh, you know what? Let me. I know, I could. I could. All right. Here's what we're gonna do. Just to get the full measure of this. Okay? All right, yeah, as if you haven't already. So what we're gonna do is, and I, and I talked about this a little bit last time. David, can you, does anybody remember how much did I go into the rapture last time? Or? Okay, all right. I'm gonna read a bunch of the cornerstone verses for the rapture. Okay? Then I am going to jump into the Old Testament and read a lot of those that really have to do with the millennial reign. And that's also going to tie in with Israel. Then next week, because I guarantee that will fill up the rest of this time. Then next week, what I'll do is jump into a more robust theology around Israel. And how that fits into really what we're reading. How does that sound? Sound good? Like, wait, wait, wait. At that point, like this Thursday?
No, so you got next week.
Oh, okay. All right, all right, all right. Well, and if nothing else, and remember, so you know, just really, the church does not have a stance on the rapture. The church does not have a stance on Israel.
What church? What do you mean by that?
Our church. I'm sorry.
The Roman Catholic Church.
That's right. Our church, our church. I'm talking about our church as we major on the majors and minor on the minors. Okay? Remember, whether you believe in the rapture or not, that is not your ticket to punch when Jesus comes back. So even if you don't believe it, and it happens, congratulations. Or not. This is all wrong. That's not gonna happen. That's right. That's right. That's right. You know what? And like I, I can only imagine. I can, oh, yeah, that's right. I can only imagine how much like, like we're just all gonna end up like the Pharisees that we've read about all of our Christian life, who are like telling Jesus like how things should be. This is what it says. And so, okay, here we go. The rapture. So we are. Oh my goodness. All right. So John, chapter 14, verse 3. John 14, verse 3, this is under the heading of rapture. Rapture. So you can find the back of one of those pages and, uh, fill this up. All right. And it says, starting at verse 1, do not let your hearts be troubled. Believe in God, believe also in me. In my father's house are many dwelling places. If it were not so, I would have told you, for I go to prepare a place for you. Verse 3, if I go and prepare a place for you, I will come again and receive you to myself, that where I am, there you may be also. Oh, that's it. All right. Revelation, chapter 3, verse 10. Well, if you really want to take it literally, he was only talking to the people around him. No, no, but like, you know, I kind of say that in jest, but but seriously, yeah, like. Context matters. It absolutely matters. So, all right. Revelation, chapter 3, verse 10. So this is to the message to Philadelphia. Because you have kept the word of my perseverance, I also will keep you from the hour of testing. That hour which is about to come upon the whole world to test those who dwell on the earth. This is a justification for pre-trib. Pre-trib rapture. So the church of Philadelphia gets the offer of being, now mind you, a lot of times the premill dispensationalists will actually read the seven church letters as periods within the church age. So that's kind of in the mix there. Uh, some will read it as different types of churches that will be around at the time of the tribulation. And so, or leading towards, um, throughout the church age. And the Philadelphian church, those of that type will be raptured. And everybody else will endure at least the first three and a half years. And at that point be taken up. Or martyred. Oh, yeah. Well, so, so there's a couple of different interpretations um, of what that verse would mean. Some believe like if this is like a type of church. I was talking to a pastor friend of mine and, um, one of the ideas is that if you were to take the seven churches as types of churches that would be around, like towards the end. That there would actually not be any churches like the church of Philadelphia at that time. That they basically like everybody else, you know, they'd become like Laodicea, like Thyatide or like Sardis, like, you know, all the others. So that's kind of an interesting piece, you know, and an interesting idea and kind of sad too. But it could also just be that, you know, something happens. And, you know, from that time of testing, from that persecution, from whatever might happen. That maybe it's disrupted, maybe there's an earthquake, you know, some divine intervention that will keep them from like that period. So, or, you know, maybe like something like that happens before the imperial persecution makes its rounds and comes to Philadelphia. So. Anyways, different ideas to it. Revelation, chapter 1, verse 7. Behold, he is coming with the clouds and every eye will see him, even those who pierced him. And all the tribes of the earth will mourn over him, so it is to be. Amen. So just the coming in the clouds. And maybe the idea is that he just stops there. So. Because in the, the idea of the rapture is that he doesn't actually like land on the Mount of Olives. Which is thought to be with his return, his actual return. So him just appearing in the clouds, that's why it doesn't actually count as his second coming. Because he has not landed on the Mount of Olives, the same place that he was ascended. So. Hey, I'm not making the rules. Just kidding. I don't know. But you know what though? Like, you know, honestly, that's just kind of what's been pieced together like, oh loophole. The religion is funny because we get to create all of our own ideas and, and if we've, and like, that's the whole idea. Like just from reading the New Testament, think about how much the Jews just absolutely missed the boat because of the expectations that they had. And, and I think there's like a point where we can hold numerous different ideas in tension. And that's okay. Like, that's, that's good. Let's just keep the main things, the main thing. So. Uh, next one is Hebrews, chapter 9. Verse 28. I think I wrote that right. And as much as is appointed for men to die once, and after this comes judgment. So Christ also having been offered once to bear the sins of many, will appear a second time for salvation without reference to sin, to those who eagerly await him. So just the appearance. Uh, Hebrews, chapter 9, verse 28. Sorry. So Christ also having been offered once to bear the sins of many, will appear a second time for salvation without reference to sin, to those who eagerly await him. Uh, Luke, chapter 21. Verse 36. Jesus speaking here about his return. But keep on the alert at all times, praying that you may have the strength to escape all these things that are about to take place and to stand before the son of man. Luke, chapter 21, verse 36. So maybe the idea here is that this is not necessarily pre-trib, but mid or post. But keep on the alert at all times, praying that you may have the strength to escape all these things that are about to take place and to stand before the son of man. So maybe it's even a gauge of have the strength to escape all of these things that are about to take place. So could even lead into a pre-trib understanding of that. First Thessalonians 4. I know this is the one you guys have been waiting on. First Thessalonians 4, 16. Oh yeah, I guess there's. First Thessalonians 4, 16, for the Lord himself will descend from heaven with a shout, with a voice of the archangel, and with the trumpet of God, and the dead in Christ will rise first. So here would be a combined rapture and resurrection. Second Thessalonians. Chapter 2. Oh boy. I'm just gonna start at verse 1 and keep reading. So you probably just, first, uh, second Thessalonians, chapter 2. Now we request you brethren, with regard to the coming of our Lord Jesus Christ and our gathering together to him. That you not be quickly shaken from your composure, or be disturbed either by a spirit or a message, or a letter, as if from us, to the effect that the day of the Lord has come. Let no one in any way deceive you, for it will not come unless the apostasy comes first. And the man of lawlessness is revealed, the son of destruction, who opposes and exalts himself above every so-called god or object of worship, so that he takes his seat in the temple of God, displaying himself as being God. Do you not remember that while I was still with you, I was telling you these things? And you know what restrains him now, so that in his time he will be revealed? For the mystery of lawlessness is already at work. Only he who now restrains will do so until he is taken out of the way. Then that lawless one will be revealed, whom the Lord will slay with the breath of his mouth and bring to an end by the appearance of his coming. That is, the one whose coming is in accord with the activity of Satan, with all power and signs and false wonders, and with all the deception of wickedness, for those who perish, because they did not receive the love of the truth, so as to be saved. For this reason, God will send upon them a deluding influence, so that they will believe what is false, in order that they all may be judged, who did not believe the truth, but took pleasure in wickedness. But we should always give thanks to God for you brethren, beloved by the Lord, because God has chosen you from the beginning for salvation through sanctification by the Spirit and faith in the truth. It was for this he called you through our gospel, that you may gain the glory of our Lord Jesus Christ. So then brethren, stand firm and hold to the traditions which you are taught, whether by word of mouth or by letter from us. Now may our Lord Jesus Christ himself, and God our Father, who has loved us and given us eternal comfort and good hope by grace, comfort and strength in your hearts and every good work and word. So a lot of context there, man of lawlessness. At what point is there a calling up? So would that fit pre-trib, mid-trib, post-trib? Take your pick. So, um, first Timothy, chapter 6. First Timothy. Ah, let's see, 614. Starting at 13, I charge you in the presence of God, who gives life to all things, and of Christ Jesus, who testified the good confession before Pontius Pilate, that you keep the commandment without stain or reproach, until the appearing of our Lord Jesus Christ, which he will bring about at the proper time, he who is the blessed and only sovereign, the king of kings and the lord of lords, who alone possesses immortality and dwells in unapproachable light, whom no man has seen or can see, to him be honor and eternal dominion. Amen. So basically, until the appearing of our Lord Jesus Christ. Second Timothy, chapter 4. Starting at verse 1, 1 through 4, I solemnly charge you in the presence of God and Christ Jesus, who is to judge the living and the dead, and by his appearing and his kingdom. Preach the word, be ready in season and out of season, reprove, rebuke, exhort with great patience and instruction. For the time will come, when they will not endure sound doctrine, but wanting to have their ears tickled, they will accumulate for themselves teachers in accordance to their own desires. And will turn away their ears from the truth and will turn aside to myths. So by his appearing and his. So, "by his appearing and his kingdom." So... Titus. Titus 2. Uh, let's see. Starting at verse 11, "For the grace of God is appeared, bringing salvation to all men, instructing us to deny ungodliness and worldly desires, and to live sensibly, righteously, and godly in the present age." So, anytime you see that age, that a lot of times, that is what is in the heads of dispensationalists, where we have, oh, in this age, but in this age. So, it's just kind of separating that out. "Looking for the blessed hope and the appearing of the glory of our great God and Savior, Christ Jesus." So, anytime we're talking about, you know, witnessing, holding to, waiting for the appearing of our Lord Jesus Christ, they are taking that in conjunction with the rapture. So, the last one, last one, 2 Peter. Chapter 3. Starting at verse 1, "This is now, beloved, the second letter I am writing to you, in which I am stirring up your sincere mind by way of reminder, that you should remember the words spoken beforehand by the holy prophets, and the commandment of the Lord and Savior spoken by your apostles. Know this first of all, that in the last days mockers will come, with their mocking following after their own lust, and saying, 'Where is the promise of his coming? For ever since the fathers fell asleep, all continues, just as it was from the beginning of creation.' For when they maintain this, it escapes their notice, that by the word of God the heavens existed long ago, and the earth was formed out of water and by water, through which the world at that time was destroyed, being flooded with water. But by his word, the present heavens and earth are being reserved for fire, kept for the day of ju- of judgment and destruction of ungodly men. But do not let this one fact escape your notice, beloved, that with the Lord one day is like a thousand years, and a thousand years like one day. The Lord is not slow about his promises, as some count slowness, but is patient toward you, not wishing for any to perish, but for all to come to repentance." So, to that, uh, part of the idea is that, in that verse, that a day is like a thousand years, so, with the premillennial dispensationalist, is that these dispensations were roughly like, a thousand years. So, if we were to take some of the genealogies literally, basically, we've been around for 6,000 years. We are on the cusp of the 7,000th, the beginning of the 7th millennium. There you go. And so, what we are coming to the end of is the 6,000 years, and so, that will usher in the messianic age. So, each of these have kind of fit nicely some, to some degree. Okay. So, that are, that's a lot of the verses that are used to justify the rapture in one idea or another. Next week, I will begin with the Old Testament verses, the major and minor prophets, and that's gonna really tie in nicely with Israel, and then we'll get into plenty of New Testament verses as well. Okay, next week, Israel is on the docket. Oh, boy.